Okay.
At this time, I'd like to call the meeting of the Special Meeting of the Gaiman Utilities Authority, call this meeting to order. Item two, approve the minutes of the special meeting, February ninth, 2021.
Make a motion when approved minutes, special meeting, February ninth, 2021, item two.
One second.
I have a motion in a second.
Peterson?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
We've got four eyes.
Item three, discussion and action to renew a five-year wastewater operation and maintenance agreement with Infomark LLC with an annual base fee of $1,309,372.08.
Okay, well, there are, as part of the background you've been provided, there are a lot of small minor things that are different from this contract from the last contract. Some of the major things that I'd like to bring out is that this contract that is your, that's before you is a five-year term from, it would expire in 2026. And it does have a capital infusion from Infomark of about $351,000. What that means is that in, as an agreement to having a five-year term, they are going to infuse about $351,000 into our plant. Part of this capital infusion would be to replace and upgrade, upgrade the current wastewater plant SCADA system so that it can be operated in a more efficient manner. They have been, that, that's one of the biggest problems, biggest assets that I see to this contract, other than we have a staff out there that is diligent about working with the city to improve our, our facilities and to do us a better job. They, the increase that they've asked for in their contract is, basically, if you boil it down to a per-month basis on what we pay, it's about $1,267 a month increase. We were anticipating that, so that is part of our budget this year. We do have our operator, Damon Berryman, here and his supervisor, Rob Kemp. They do have a PowerPoint that they can present if you would like, or I'd let them answer any questions that you may have about the contract and maybe let them go a little bit further into some of the details about the contract.
Good evening. Most of y'all know me, I'm Damon Berryman, I'm the project manager with Infomark. We do y'all's wastewater treatment facility out there off of Road T behind Seaboard. We've been there since June of 2014. We've made many improvements to the facility, we continue to do so. I personally take a lot of pride in that facility and my staff, they, or my team, they, they do as well, collectively give the city a good job out there. Do y'all have any questions?
I've got a quick one. On item 2.5 of the contract, capital improvements, operator may recommend capital improvements or operational changes to authority as are necessary or recommended. Could you just give us an example that might come across that?
Sure, I'll give you an example that we did two years ago. We found out that there was an extremely high electrical usage on the blowers, which maintain the microorganisms. And so, we presented to the city manager at that time and said, hey, these blowers, one, we can save you power, two, we can save you on wear and tear by installing VFDs, which are, control the blowers according to their needs instead of just coming on wide open. So, when we did that, I think we say, we cut down electrical cost, we averaged between three to four thousand a month that we saved. And that was at a capital improvement that the city budgeted for, and we were able to turn around and do that for the city.
Okay. Appreciate it.
So, we make, we make capital improvements based on the needs that we see and, and we have different software data management systems that help us create trends so we can see where to make those capital improvements if needed.
Okay. So, since 2014, how many BEQ negatives have we gotten?
That was the reason we actually came on board is during that time, the City of Gaiman had experienced multiple fish kills in their toxicity testing. And so, Infomark came in and since then, we did some engineering studies with the city. We found out what was causing the fish kills, we've eliminated, eliminated that industrial source, so that's no longer there. We continue to monitor the industry that's there. But, to answer your question, I think we've had, I've been here three years and I think we've had two. One was for a failure to monitor and I dropped the ball on that because there was some miscommunication between the previous management and myself. And, and then the other one was, we had a, what we call an uncontrollable excursion. We had a piece of equipment that failed and we caught it the next morning, which is another reason we're wanting to upgrade the SCADA is because that will limit our compliance issues because right now, we have no alarm callouts at all. So, when something goes wrong, we don't know it till the next morning. So, we did catch it the next morning, we corrected the issue, but the, the flow had already left the facility, so we had to report it and that was a notice of violation. There was no fees attached to that, just a letter of reprimand, if you want to say, and six months later, it was wiped from the record.
Thank you. I don't have any questions.
Well, I'm happy with
Yeah.
what you guys have done.
Appreciate it. We enjoy, we enjoy working with you guys, we really do.
Thank you.
Thanks, Damon.
Thank you.
Make a motion to renew a five-year wastewater operation maintenance agreement with Infomark LLC, annual base fee 1.39728 cents, item three.
One second, Thet.
I have a motion in a second.
Peterson?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
We've got four eyes.
Item four, discussion and action to engage Park Hill Engineering to perform and prepare a risk and resilience assessment and emergency action plan in amount not to exceed $25,000.
Okay, this is a EPA mandate that we do. It hit our population range this year and is required to be completed by June of 2021. And we became aware of it, Tracy bought, in about, yeah, first part of February is when we became aware of this that needed to be done. Since that time, we have been looking into the cost of doing this. We've had a couple of different, Park Hill gave us a figure at the beginning that was, in my opinion, a whole lot more than what we should have been paying. And after I checked with some of the other cities around the state that have prepared this doc, had this risk and resilience, the assessment and emergency action plan prepared, they did it for a whole lot less than what it was being proposed to us. I went back and addressed this with the engineering company and were able to negotiate this down to $25,000. So, about $40,000 off of their original cost estimate. Again, this is a mandated plan by EPA, we don't have a choice but to do it. See, after discussions with other, we've talked about the, getting the footing down to an acceptable way, range. This, this was not anticipated during the FY 2021 budget planning process and funds will be needed to be transferred into the water department's professional development services to pay for this. The way I anticipate doing or the way I intend on doing that is evaluating the, the other line items that are part of the General Utility Authority and making the adjustments where we need to. There might be some areas where we can trim a little bit off of each item throughout the fund to cover the cost on this. Or we may be able to save some money out of our capital improvement planning budgets to account for that, account for this also. If you have any questions, I'd certainly, certainly try to answer them at this point. It's one of these things that we probably really rather not spend our money to do, but we don't have a choice, we've got to get it done. And it's not, we, staff looked at it and it's really not something that we're going to be able to prepare in a house. That's another thing that we did look at, trying to determine how to save some cost on it, but it's something that we're not going to be able to perform in a house.
I'll make a motion that we engage Park Hill Engineering to perform and prepare a risk resilience assessment and emergency action plan in the amount not to exceed $25,000.
Second.
I have a motion in a second.
Peterson?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
We've got four eyes.
Item five, discussion and action to grant LW Development LLC an incentive of $2,500 per home to incorporate gas services into the new subdivision, Saddle Ridge Trails.
Okay, well, I've talked to most of you individually about this and I believe there should be a lot of, that you may have a lot of discussion about this item. But, the housing addition for the Saddle Ridge Trails was originally planned to be an all-electric housing addition. Well, since we sell gas and that's part of the way we make our, we make our revenue and are able to operate the city, it's my opinion that it would be in the city's best interest to have that as a, a gas dual-fuel housing addition. We talked to Lance Windell about this, originally, he was, you know, not really, he was, he wasn't, I'm not going to say he wasn't receptive, but didn't have a lot to say, didn't have a lot of conversation about it. He did come back to us a couple of months ago, about a month ago, rather, and told us that he would consider making it a gas, gas heat and gas housing addition. And I don't know exactly how to best phrase that, but if we were to put, if we, after talking with Tracy, our best estimate for installing the infrastructure to supply the neighborhood with gas is going to be about $140,000. Lance, or Mr. Windell has requested $2,500 per home incentive, which, if you, if you look at his letter, it's broken down and that's what it's going to basically cost him to do a gas housing addition per home. I believe there are 78 homes in the, in the housing addition. And if we did a $2,500 per home incentive, then that would cost an additional $195,000 or about $335,000 in total. Well, if on housing, on houses in that area, utility bills average about $3,000 a year per home. So, if we have, if we're selling all of our utilities to the homes that he's constructing, 78 homes, that would be a revenue increase of about $234,000, which is about an 18-month payback on the investment that we would make. Now, I think that there's a lot of financial reasons to do this, but I know that there are political reasons that may prevent us from doing it. And I, I just want to make sure that we are doing the right thing for our community and for the housing addition. See, if we, if this is what my recommendation, I think, would be, is that if we were to pass this and you were to grant this addition, of course, this was not a, this, this was not anticipated during the budget process, so we're going to have to try to figure out how we come up with the funds to do this, or it's going to have to come out of our reserves to do this. If it comes out of our reserves, I'm certainly going to want to earmark that, that first six months to put that money back into our reserves so that we're made, so the city is made whole again by the sales of utilities in this area. But, one of the things to help maybe mitigate or extend out the, the money that we are paying out, I would recommend that we pay the incentive based on the house, the way the house is constructed and based on the inspection. So, once the inspector goes out and inspects the home, and I'm assuming he's not going to do 78 homes at one time, but as he does his inspections and sees that, yes, gas plumbing is installed in the house and yes, it's up to code, then we would be free to pay the incentive, the $2,500 on that house. Thus, thus, we would be making 78, potentially 78 different payments for houses as they are constructed. This would give us a chance to spread out the cost and maybe not have such a large unbudgeted, one-time payout. Or if it was done at one time, it should, in my opinion, it should be done after the housing addition, after the homes are constructed. And we've done our inspections and everything's up to code and we've got everything cleared to pay out. Now, if we do not do the incentive to Mr. Windell, I think initially, right now, my recommendation would be that we at least look at the installation of the gas infrastructure so that in the future, if a house wants to convert to gas from all-electric, then we've got the infrastructure in place for them to hook up to. I know I have been approached by several different people in, in the community since I've been here to see about getting gas to their homes and we just don't have the infrastructure in the area to get house, get gas to the house that they would like to have. And we're, and we're stuck with struggling with figuring out how to get house, infrastructure in the alleys and even the neighborhoods for the people that want to convert their homes to gas from all-electric. And that, this, now, if we're going to do the infrastructure now, it makes sense to do it now while there's not a house out there, when we're not trying to work around other utilities and everything else, it makes sense to do that now at this stage of the game instead of 10 years from now when we're having to fight other utility, other utility infrastructure items to put it in. I think I've been a long way around the block to say that, but it, so if you've got any questions, please let me know so maybe I can get them answered.
The figures that, that he comes up with, the $2,500 per home, is that a charge that, well, for instance, like the gas furnace? Now, he's going to have to put it in a furnace anyway, so is that the difference between an electric one and a gas one or?
Yes.
It is a difference?
That, that's what he's reported to us.
Okay.
He, he has also told us that these numbers are from a, from a local contractor.
Here in town or, okay.
I'm going to say local, I'm not going to say here in town.
But it's local, okay.
I didn't, I didn't go
Panhandle region.
I didn't, yeah, I didn't, I didn't go that deep into the details with him. He did say it was a local contractor, whether it's in out of Gaiman, whether it's in Hook view, whether, that part, I don't know.
Mr. Livinggood, can I ask you a question since you live out in that addition? Is your house is all electric?
No, it's all gas.
It's all gas?
It's all, so the, the heating is gas. What I would tell you is obviously, the cold snap that we got was probably once every 10, 20, 30, who knows, really. Obviously, it got really cold.
Yes.
Those heaters failed again.
They did.
Mine personally.
The gas heater failed.
Yeah, froze up for me, just like it did a couple of years ago. So, that's my concern with putting gas heaters in an attic. I'm not opposed to putting the gas in, obviously, it builds revenue for the city. My concern is putting it in an attic isn't probably the most ideal place moving forward.
And, and to address that, we did talk about that a little bit and Mr. Windell has told, has assured us that he has learned a lot since he built your house and that my recollection is that the heating and the gas, that, that infrastructure for the house will not be in the attic now.
Right.
It'll be
Probably in the closet.
More of a conventional type of a
Right.
setup.
Yeah, that's my only concern was
And to address the, the part of that also, my understanding is that to get Mayor Livinggood's housing addition to gas, at the time, the city paid a $12,000 incentive.
I think that incentive was just to have them to come, the building.
Yeah, he would know what it was.
I thought it was, I thought it was to make it all gas.
No, that was, that was to incentivize, that was based on what Pankas City had done on incentive program and Mr. Windell's the one that stepped up and said, since you've done that, I will put the incentive in.
Okay, did I, did I misunderstood that, that originally?
Now, that's my understanding.
Okay.
Yeah. So, yeah, that's my only concern, that's originally with the, obviously, the heat pump.
So, if he puts it in a
More conventional style.
You'd be content with that?
It's either, so, yeah, they, the ones that didn't fail were the ones that had the different insulation put in, that's kind of your, either insulate the attic differently or put them in more conventional style.
And he's putting it, this time, in a more conventional style, is that correct?
That was, that's my recollection of our conversation.
Yes, sir. Otherwise, no issues.
Okay.
I mean, it's gotten below freezing, it's just when it got really, really cold, I think it gets, yeah, 10 degrees and lower, that's when you start having the issues.
I like the idea of not issuing the incentive until it's inspected. I like that idea.
I imagine if we don't issue the incentive, Mr. Dunham, then they're probably not going to move forward with doing gas, correct?
That was my recall, Mr. Windell, yes.
From the financial aspect, it really makes sense to do it.
Right.
We, we didn't pay it until the last time.
We didn't pay until it was completed.
Right, right, yeah.
Say that again?
The incentive last time was paid once the addition was done and, and approved by the inspector. I think that's where it got hung up, was the inspector approved it and the heaters failed. That's if
We don't, we, we didn't, we didn't pay any incentive until the house was completed.
Correct.
Well, and I never asked anybody on how we paid it in the last
Was it completed or sold?
Well, it might have been sold.
I think it was sold, actually.
It would have been.
I think.
But it was
Yeah, because I think we incentive, paid it out for probably a year after.
Yeah. But it was It was based, that's why we created the Housing Finance Authority, because we based it on what Pankas City had had successfully.
Any other discussion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the grant to LW Development LLC as an incentive for $2,500 per home to incorporate gas services into the new subdivision, Saddle Ridge Trails.
After construction.
After construction, after inspection.
Second.
I have a motion in a second.
Peterson?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
We've got four eyes.
Item six, discussion on the Schneider Electric Infrastructure Upgrade Program and investigative grade audit.
Okay, well, basically, I'm just going to open this and up to discussion from the group, from the council. We've all set through the presentation that Schneider Electric performed, that gave over the last, about two weeks ago, I think, is when we all sat down individually. But, so I just kind of, I haven't had an opportunity to visit with you about your feelings about this. I will say this before I open it up for some discussion, is that I did reach out to city man, through a city manager organization requesting information about and thoughts and how, if anybody else had worked with Schneider Electric in the state. The only response I received was from the city manager in Norman, where he has not worked with them in Norman, he worked with them when he was in Hanford, California, and said that they were, had a very big presence there. His exact words are, the company is rock solid, if you're working on a guaranteed performance contract, you can count on it. I had really solid Schneider personnel available to me, I developed a high level of trust in their math, they worked on a large-scale HVAC improvements in a 100-year-old multi-story building and the company was all, and the company also had great support from the lead of California cities. That was the only response I had. That was the only response I had back from city managers. I did have a conversation today with our bond attorney who stated that they had worked, they had, they had, that they had information where numerous cities had worked with other companies, not Schneider Electric, but other companies on this same type of program where the benefits that we received from the investigative audit just didn't happen. I'm not, again, I want to, I want to emphasize that was not with Schneider Electric. I think my personal experience has been that on the project we're talking about, the main project we're talking about, which is the water meter replacement project, we're going to be hard, we're going to have to do something really wrong for us not to realize revenue increases and/or expense savings from that project. That, that is just going to be, it's going to be there. And with that, I'm just going to kind of open it up for discussion with you gentlemen and see what your thoughts were. How do you want to proceed with this? This is, this is kind of the same thing as the wage study. I need, need a little bit of input from you to see where we go, what our next step is going to be.
I'll, I'll go first. I have been acquainted with Snyder and they are very ready for the firm. They offer something that I think some towns can benefit from. My concern is I don't think I am one of them. We talk of retrofitting lighting and other things in buildings that the oldest is eight years old in. And most of the mechanical systems have 25-year estimated life. As far as upgrade LED lighting, we can replace those bulbs as we need them and use Dallas acceptable ones. I think for the cost, I know that on the, my feeling is in on the automatic water metering systems, there's companies that do that. We have the ability to borrow and manage and go forward. And I, I don't see the $48,000 upfront for an investigator bought it. I think, I think we can, we can manage without bringing in a third party. That's my.
Well, Mike, when we first started, it was going to be the water and gas meters. That's what we were concerned about. And I still think that's what we're concerned about. And the other, I think we can definitely take care of ourselves. When a light fixture goes out, you can, you can switch to LEDs. So I would like, I don't know if we can do the work of switching out water meters, you know?
My experience is that that's going to be best done by contractors and that my experience is that that's going to be best done by the supplier of the meter that we choose. So if we choose a USTI meter or a Mueller meter, they have a crew that comes around and does that. In other communities, that's the way we implement it. It's much more efficient because for implementation, it gets done a lot quicker. Because our crews are going to have to break off, uh, doing some, doing, installing the water meter to, or a gas meter, go fix a water line or a gas line that's broken. They're going to have to do that. These crews, this is all they focus on. They come in and all they do is replace meters.
Have we gotten a bid from these people, somebody that?
We have not, we have not made a choice at all on the type of company we would want to use for the meter replacement and/or gas replacement. Staff and I have discussed it. We know we want a company that does both. Now we're trying to target, target companies that do both. There are some companies that do gas, there's some companies that do electric, there's some companies that do water. But we want somebody that's going to do both water and gas for our community. So one of, one thing that we're going to is, is identifying those companies that do both water and gas. And that's where we're at right now internally, besides developing the RFP.
My personal opinion, I'm going to have, I agree with Mr. Peterson, is that I, I I really think we need to focus our attention on the water and gas meters and not worry about this audit for $48,000.
Yeah, I'm going to have to agree as well that that's our biggest area of concern, all the lights, HVAC. I mean, not really interested right now at this time, or we've got to get the water and gas fixed. Good? Yeah. Item seven, any new business? Item eight, reports from city manager and council members. Mr. Dunham?
Let's go first.
You got it. How long do you want me to make this?
30 seconds.
By 9:10. By 9:10, it's 9:00.
By 9:10? Well, a few things that I would like to hit is first and foremost, I want to thank the fire department for their efforts to control and extinguish the fire last Thursday. There were approximately eight or nine different departments responding to that incident. And it was getting really close to Gaimin, where we were going to have to look at doing some evacuations before they got it under control. They did a tremendous job in getting that under control, and I want to say thank you very much for your work that you did. Over the past couple of weeks, I've been having departmental meetings to discuss the wage study and implementation and performance evaluations that we talked about here earlier tonight. And we've made it a point where there may be just a few employees that haven't heard that. But that was because they were either sick or absent on that day. But it's very few of the employees that haven't already heard that. I did meet today with Rick Smith, as I implied earlier, about the different financing methods for the police station. Also, I talked some with Alan Brooks. We discussed the pros and the cons of the different financing mechanisms for the, the well-filled expansion, AMR water installation, and the water tower construction. What we have determined is that for the AMR, or the AMI, we should be able to use the OWRB's Clean Water SRF loan. And for the water tower construction, we're going to probably need to use the, the drinking water SRF fund. They, they're very similar. The clean water can probably go a little bit faster to get those, to get that money in place to really be able to release a bid. We should be able to have that money in place within three months to release that bid so that we can contract with somebody and get started in about four months. The water tower construction is going to take a little bit longer to get, get that done. And quite frankly, we're not as far along on that project as we are on the meters. We still have engineering to do and a lot of that other thing, a lot of those other things that I haven't brought to you, you to decide on yet. We have talked briefly about some well felt, well-filled expansion and what that would look like. And for that type of project, we're probably going to be looking at a, the, the fixed asset program that OWRB has, FAF, FAP rather, program that OWRB has. It carries a little bit higher interest rate, but it is still a viable product, viable way to fund that particular side of that project. I will have more information on water well tower construction and well-filled expansion at later council meetings. The Water Task Force and Councilman Peterman, Peterson can step in here anytime. But we are working on a water conservation seminar to help citizens understand the situation that we're in. The city has, you know, where we're at, we've successfully rehabbed two water wells over the, this, over the winter months. We're waiting on testing from DEQ to get back in so we can put those back online. And then we have a third one that we are ready to take offline and start rehabbing before the summer months get here. And get that finished and back in play before summer gets here. And where the, these improvements for these wells are an enhancement to the community and should make the situation better than it was last year. I want to stress, these are just Band-Aids to the real problem. And there's, and conservation will be needed this summer so that we can ensure that there's adequate, they're an adequate water supply for everybody. So that's the importance of having this, or the purpose of having this conservation seminar with the citizens so that they understand it's not a matter of whether or not you pay your bill or whether you pay your bill on time. It's a, it's a supply issue. When, with the wells that we have, we, last, like last summer, we were bumping right up against actually pumping in the maximum amount of water we could, we could to, and that's what we, our delivery was in a day. I think at one point, there was only about a 5% difference in what we could actually pump and what we were actually delivering. So that's the issue we're running up against right now. And we are working diligently to get that programmed so we can permit it, present it to the public over a few different meetings, maybe before summer gets here. The last thing I would want to discuss with you a little bit was kind of give you an update on where we are for our, our financial situation. Right now, the general fund looks really good. We show that we, you know, being 17% through the year, we show that we've collected about 46% of our estimated revenues. But what I'm going to say is that number is skewed because of our TCEC settlement. We received that money in a lump sum. And so that number is skewed because of that, that settlement amount that we received. Our expenses, we're more or less on track. We're a little under the 17% at 14. And that's about $1.4 million worth of expenditures. As far as the, the authority is concerned, we are under, where we, under the 17% mark right now for revenues collected, we're at 9%. That would, that's a, that's a actual dollar collection of about $1.7 million. So that's about 6% less than where we would like to be. Our appropriations that we have spent, we have spent about $1.6 million. So we're still collecting more than we're spending each month. But the various, it's, it's a very minute difference. But that expenditure rate is about 8% of what we would normally have, what we would have expended if we would have been spending the same amount throughout the year. We were expending the same amount every month throughout the year, we would expect to be at 17%. Our sales tax came in for the month of February. It was actually looking really, it actually looked really good. Sales tax was $603,000. And that was an increase of about 5% or about $26,000 from the same year or the same month last year. For the year, our collections and sales tax is running about 3% of what our budget projections would say we would need to be at. Use tax, little different scenario. We collected $95,000 in use tax. This is a decrease from the same month a year ago of about 26% or about $34,000. We, a year ago February, we had a really good month for use tax. For year-to-date, we are 0.09% behind, so less than 1% behind what we would need to be if, to collect our budgeted projections in February. So there, it's about even. Our utility billing was actually down some for February. Of course, we haven't started billing out yet in the month of February. We have not started billing out for the cold, the cold spike that we had. Right now, our, we would need to, we're about at a 4% of our projected budget for the year. So we'd like, we certainly need to be looking at what we are billing and making sure that we are collecting everything that we should be. Those are the highlights of our financial situation. You should have had that, you should have received that a couple of days ago. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them. And I got finished in 11 minutes.
Any other reports?
I'll have a report, but like to emphasize on the fire deal. We're in a, I'm sure the chief would, would agree with me. We're in a tremendous fire day hazard for the next couple of months. We've got a lot of fuel out there. I think we need to ramp up on weeds and trash around homes and structures. That deal the other day when it was burning, there were embers floating into town. And we don't need a major fire. So do your part or else somebody might knock on your door and ask you to do your part. That's all I got.
I'm good.
I'm good. We'll stand adjourned. Thank you.